Good evening, everyone. I am going to call this meeting to order. The time is 6:30. This is a regular council meeting for October 13th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call? Mayor Protem Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Muir?
Here.
Councilor Obrak?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grafstein?
I am here. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Counselor Wright. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Let us gather here today for the sake of our city. May we leave our baggage at the door and rise above our own thoughts and feelings to do what's best for the greater good. May we acknowledge the struggles of our neighbors and ask our neighbors to acknowledge that we have struggles of our own. In today's meeting, may we move the city forward, make progress towards healing, and work towards doing what's best for our community. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right. I do have one addition I'd like to add to 1A, an update from Officer Schramm. He's going to just give us a quick update on the police. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor, can I make a motion to make the addition?
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A few motions have been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those who can't say nope, motion carries. Is there any other additions or deletions? All right. Seeing none, I'm just going to ask Officer Schramm to give his update now. Thank you. And then we will move into public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those who don't know me, my name is Sergeant Steve Schramm. I'm the commander for the reserves here with Madison Heights Police Department. On Wednesday, October 15th, we are having a open house to try and get new members to the reserve program. So if you're interested or want to find out about the reserve program, it'll be right here at the police department at 280 West 13 Mile from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We'll have a short presentation about what the reserve program is, how we can help you out, what you can do for the citizens of Madison Heights. So if you want to get involved in a community project with the police department and be part of the reserve program, please come out today, well, on Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I look forward to talking with anybody who wants to come and join the reserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Schramm. All right. Next up, we have public hearing. This is regarding the alley vacation request, PEE 25-01, the 17-foot-wide alley between 601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth.
The Community and Economic Development Department has received a request to vacate a 17-foot-wide improved alley right-of-way located at 601 West 12 Mile and 28768 Dartmouth Road. The alley also provides access to the property at 611 West 12 Mile Road. All adjacent property owners have signed the petition. The applicant is requesting that the decision be postponed until the next city council meeting, October 27th, due to the applicant having a traffic study conducted at the recommendation of the city and the Oakland County Road Commission, and the results should be available before that date. We will, however, be having the public hearing today as posted. So staff recommends a motion to postpone the alley vacation request, PEE 2501, for a 17-foot-wide alley between 601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth Street, to October the 27th, 2025 city council meeting after the public hearing tonight.
All right. Thank you. So with that, I am going to open the meeting to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak specifically on this alley vacation. Most likely, we will be postponing it, but until we take the vote, we won't actually know that. So with that, I invite whoever would like to speak. If you give your name, address, affiliation with the city, whoever.
Timothy Guster, 28757 Dartmouth. The property adjacent to 28767. Members of the city council, thank you for having me today. Today, I'm going to not do a deep dive because I guess we'll wait until next week or the following week. So what I did want to do is share some photos with you that I took, if it's possible to pass it around, of just a common day, it's a Friday at 4:00, of the traffic that backs up any given day, just some visuals to see every day, Monday through Friday, Monday through Sunday. It's just always backed up. So I've got those. I've also got a property line here. You can see where the alleyway, this is actually the alleyway where it comes out, so congested as can be.
If you want to hand them over, I'll take them.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you guys, I've seen this, you guys all live in Madison Heights, but visual.
Thank you.
I just took one recently of just if they do propose and you guys decide to give the alley away, this is actually a property line of my house for where the driveway will be of the new throughway. It'll be 15 feet from my house, which supposes on everything, you know, every grid I have, like in Madison Heights. And then this one here, just an example. So I just wanted to come up here and just show you the visuals today because, again, there's a deep dive of why and why not. But if they're going to do a traffic study, I think that'll help. There's a bunch of stuff out there that's, this is, I think the last meeting I heard the planning commissioner, one of the commissioners say, "We kicked this can down the road far too long." I couldn't believe I heard that. I applaud the commissioners that continue to kick the can down the road because this is, until they provide a proposed safe solution, you've got to kick that can down the road. You can't just give in. So I thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Sapia, 50-year resident and homeowner of the residential neighborhood of Dartmouth Carum Drive in Bel Air Streets. Would the residents of that neighborhood please stand? We want to make sure you, everyone knows you're here. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for being here and for all your support. The planning board and you, the city council, has punted the Dartmouth expansion project for over two years. This is my eighth meeting on this problem. Well, we've talked about all the problems that involve this project, traffic, traffic congestion, noise, neighborhood disruption, 170 cars going in and out every day and dropping home values. So what major point can I bring to you, the city council, today? Well, that's one word: no. When I was a teacher, coach, and athletic director, I dealt with many, many people. I found everyone had their own special situation that didn't fit the current rules, so they would want an exception to the rules for their special case. I made an exception one time for a special circumstance that was important to that one person. What a mistake. That opened the floodgates because everyone had their own special situation. It was always brought up to me, you let so-and-so slide, why not me? Today, we have the same situation, commercial zoning with all its rules and reasons versus residential zoning with its rules and reasons. The nature company has a special situation. They need more land, they need more parking, they need more street access. So what did this company do to get their way? They bought a house in our neighborhood so they could tear it down to meet their needs, all the while encroaching on a residential zone, hoping to make it a commercial zone. Don't let this happen. Don't let this set a precedent for future special situations in Madison Heights. Say no to the Dartmouth Alley Access Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Kathy Lassila. I live at 28727 Dartmouth, been there for 38 years. I'm happy to see that you're doing a traffic study. Last time I was up here, I told you there was a lot of traffic coming down our street. We sit on our porch most nights, so I did tallies since the last meeting. We have an average of 100 to 180 cars driving down our street every hour, and I am not exaggerating, especially between 5:00 and 9:00. That's when we sit on our porch. Today, before I left the house, I counted cars for 45 minutes. We had 155. So if you think adding more traffic to our street is a good idea, then I'm sorry I moved here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening about this?
Hi, I'm Stacia, 28734 Dartmouth. I am here because I don't want him to die. As much as I watch my child, as much as I watch my dog, there are some times I'm decorating for Halloween to try to make my house look beautiful for the neighborhood, and he's by my side. They're quick, dogs, children, they're fast. And I want to make sure that the people driving down our street are knowledgeable about how fast they're going, who's coming down the street, how safe they're being. And I really don't want people coming home from the bar at 11:00 PM because they decided to watch a football game and they're deciding to walk down our street, and that's what they choose to do. I don't need that. We already have a busy enough street, and as much as I appreciate, we were redoing our house, and as much as I appreciate, like, Home Depot and Lowe's being, like, right across the street, it was wonderful. But the amount of people just trying to go to work, I can't even get down my driveway sometimes because people are so backed up trying to go. And then you're just going to add another piece of the puzzle to this. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right, and I don't think that's the right thing to do for a community versus a dollar value that's coming back. Tax values have already gone up. The community is already getting all of that in terms of taxes. I don't think it's right to try to just put something into our community for the tax dollar values. It's not fair. And I didn't bring him for, like, a sob story. My husband's at work, so. It's Cinco de Mayo. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Nager from Nature Companies. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It seems like we have the regular crowd here. I would like to, you know, state that there's, you know, a lot of people that live in Madison Heights, and I feel like we've gotten our taste of, you know, the 10 people or so that are really opposed to this, but we've also been talking to a lot of folks in Madison Heights that would like to see this happen. We have many letters of support that I'm prepared to, you know, provide you guys in the upcoming meeting. And I just want everybody here to know, we're here to address the alley vacation. The alley vacation is only contingent upon approval of the special land use, so if the alley vacation, if the special land use doesn't happen, we're not going to go through with the alley vacation. That being said, we're talking about trying to keep the neighborhood intact, trying to keep the neighborhood safe. Well, let me tell everybody something. The neighborhood is going to be much safer when we improve that alley. What we're looking at is an alley, again, we're here to talk about the alley. This is an alley that was plotted in the 1970, 1972. I believe that was brought up in the last meeting. So this thing was planned as part of the subdivision. This is a commercial alley. What's happened over the years, times change, things change. This thing's old. It's antiquated. It's not safe. What we're doing is trying to provide solutions to make this a safer destination. This restaurant is on a commercial piece. We're not asking for anything there. The restaurant is on a commercial property. It's a byright development. There can be a lot of other things that go on the property that are going to, you know, be of similar use. So what we're trying to do is focus on this alley, making it nicer, safer. The first things that were brought up were landscaping. We addressed that. Parking, we addressed that. Now it's traffic. We're addressing that as well. The alley will be built to be safer, more beautiful, walkable, so all these things are going to be improvements. And, you know, I think everyone's just being a little bit shortsighted here and saying, you know, "This is not something we want. We don't want it in our backyard." Well, to be honest, you know, this is something that could happen anyway, and if it doesn't, it could be something else that's going to happen there as well. So something is going to be built there. We have a great use. We have a, you know, we're going to spend a lot of money there and try to do this thing and plan it right. And that's what I would like everybody to know and understand, and, you know, sometimes you have to look at both points of view. But again, I feel like all we've been hearing is all the negatives from the, you know, 10 residents that get up here, and I've been dealing with this for five months now.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, you are out of order. You did have a turn.
So I just wanted everyone to know, you know, you're going to get a few different points of view, and unfortunately, I'm the only one here speaking up on it positively. And, you know, we're hearing from the, you know, the 10 residents that unfortunately don't want this to happen. So thank you guys for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Urla, 28724 Dartmouth. The reason you see the same 10 people is because we're all directly affected by this. That's why you see the same 10 people all the time. We're directly affected by this. Would any of you folks like this being built down the street from your house? Would any of you like that? I don't want it. I'm not interested in it. Last Sunday, there was not a single spot to park on my street because one house was having a young kid's birthday party. There's going to be one birthday, there's going to be one baby shower, there's going to be one bridal shower, there's going to be one event at this, down this alleyway, I'm not even going to bring it up, down this alleyway that's going to cause more trouble and confusion. The same 10 people are here is because we're concerned about our neighborhood. We're concerned about our housing, and we're concerned about our kids. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak specifically on this topic?
Hi, my name is Leanne Heithaller, 28125 Dicing Drive. This is my first council meeting. I am opposed to this because it doesn't improve the neighborhood. As stated, it only, it doesn't improve the neighborhood. If someone was in support of it who lived in the neighborhood, let them speak. Let them come here and say, "I want this." Instead, we hear people who live in Madison Heights, who live in the neighborhood, saying, "No, this is not what we want." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. Thank you.
I'm just going to echo the comment that was made.
Ma'am, thank you. You've had, yes, thank you.
It's the same 10 people.
Thank you. You've had your turn.
It's not the same 10 people.
Please don't make me kick you out when you're holding a child at your first meeting.
This is my first time, so it's not the same people.
Yes. Thank you for coming. Thank you. All right. Yes, I did not realize you were standing. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Alott. I don't live in that subdivision. I live on 30644 Winthrop Drive, which is north on 13 Mile.
Sorry, you need to speak into the microphone. Just step over a bit.
I'm so sorry. I would like to know, like, how would a Cisco food truck that's a semi would be able to turn into a residential street to get into an alley? That's number one question. And would that back up 12 Mile Road on both sides, east and westbound, in addition to the same traffic light that is used by Home Depot and Lowe's? So that's kind of my main concern is how is that going to be affected? And, you know, I understand the residents, and I'm opposing the same concern that they have, so I just wanted to let you say that.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken this evening that would like to speak on this topic? All right. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'm going to close public comment, and we are going, oh, and we are going to move on to the vote. So because we're going to see the traffic study, I'm going to ask for a motion to postpone the vote for the alley to October 27th, which is two weeks from now, which is our next meeting, and we should have the results. So if I can get a motion to postpone until October 27th, please?
Your Honor, motion to postpone the alley vacation request, PEE 25-01, to October 27th.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. This has been postponed for another two weeks till October 27th. You are all welcome to come back and speak your one time. All right? And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting as well. So next up, we have meeting open to the public. So this is just the general open to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak on any topic, what we've just talked about, or anything else, you are welcome to speak for three minutes. I ask that you come to the podium, address me, give your name, address any affiliation with the city. And with that, I'm going to open public comment for any topic, and if you wish to speak on this topic again, you may. Or if you would just be, yeah, if you'd like to speak on this topic again, if you'd like. This is public comment about whatever you would like.
I would just like to comment on the disdain that you have for these same 10 people.
If you could please address me with your comments.
Oh, okay. I'd like to comment on the disdain that was shown up here for these 10 people. If I had my little chart with the X for the house he bought to knock down, all these people are boom, 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 boom. Yeah. Yeah, people love stuff that they're not, it doesn't affect them. I'm sure people on the other side of John R. and, you know, everyone, "Yeah, let's have this. It's great." But the people whose backyards are there, whose kids are on the front lawn, whose lights are going to be coming in their picture window, then I did not appreciate that disdain. Very disrespectful to these 10 people, and there's more than 10. Thank you.
If there's anybody else who wishes to speak on any topic? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. We are going to move to the consent agenda. We have three items. The first one is a resolution condemning political violence in the United States. The second is a resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the third is the city council regular meeting minutes of September 29th. I'm going to ask that we pull the resolution for condemning political violence and see if I can get a motion to approve the other two items.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda excluding the resolution condemning political violence in the United States.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Okay. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. I'm going to ask the officer if you can just shut the door, please. Thank you. All right. And I pulled that not because I don't agree with it, but because I want to read it in full. There's been a lot of violence. There has been for a while, and I want to thank Councilman Fleming and Protem Bliss for making this resolution. Politics aren't what they used to be. With that, read the resolution. Madison Heights City Council Resolution Condemning Political Violence in the United States. Whereas on September 10th, 2025, conservative political activist Charlie Kirk, the co-founder of Turning Point USA, was assassinated while answering questions from college students attending Utah Valley State University in Orem, Utah. The assassin has been arrested and is awaiting trial. And whereas on June 14th, 2025, Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman, a Democrat, and her husband Mark Hortman were shot and killed by an assassin disguised as a police officer in a targeted, politically motivated attack at their Minneapolis home. And just prior to the attack on the Hortmans, the assassin shot and wounded Minnesota State Senator John Hoffman, a Democrat, and his wife Laura Hoffman at their home. The assassin has been arrested and is awaiting trial. And whereas on April 13th, 2025, Pennsylvania Governor Josh Shapiro's official residence was firebombed by a would-be assassin who scaled a security fence, broke windows, and threw a homemade Molotov cocktails into the residence at 2:00 AM while the governor, his wife, and their family were sleeping inside. The firebombing caused significant damage to the official residence, requiring millions of dollars and taxpayers to repair. The would-be assassin and arsonist is awaiting trial. And whereas on December 4th, 2024, Brian Thompson, the CEO of United Healthcare, was assassinated in Midtown Manhattan, New York, as he was entering a building for a company meeting by a masked assailant. The assassin fled the scene but was arrested five days later and is currently awaiting trial. And whereas on September 15th, 2024, an attempted assassination occurred of Republican presidential candidate Donald Trump at his golf course in West Palm Beach, Florida. The would-be assassin was found guilty of all charges included the attempted assassination of a major presidential candidate, along with a range of firearms offenses. And whereas on July 13th, 2024, an attempted assassination occurred of Republican presidential Donald Trump during a campaign rally in Butler, Pennsylvania. One bullet grazed and bloodied candidate Trump's ear, and another killed a rally attendee. The Secret Service killed the assassin. And whereas on October 28th, 2022, Paul Pelosi, the 82-year-old husband of U.S. Representative Nancy Pelosi, a Democrat from California, was attacked during a break-in of their home and was struck in the head by a hammer, causing a skull fracture and other serious injuries by an attacker who intended to hold Nancy Pelosi hostage. The attacker was convicted of both state and federal charges and sentenced to 30 years in federal prison. And whereas on July 19th, 2020, Daniel Adrell, the 20-year-old son of U.S. District Court Judge Esther Salas, was murdered, and Mark Adrell, the husband of Judge Salas, was seriously wounded at their home by a disgruntled lawyer and self-proclaimed anti-feminist posing as a FedEx delivery driver. The assassin was found dead of a self-inflicted gunshot wound the next day. And whereas in October 2020, the government authorities uncovered a domestic terror plot to kidnap and murder Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, a Democrat, by conspirators angered by Whitmer's COVID restrictions and their anti-government beliefs. The two men accused of leading the plot were found guilty and sentenced to lengthy prison terms. Two other defendants pleaded guilty, and three other defendants were acquitted. And whereas on October 27th, 2018, a man expressing hatred for Jewish people and opposition to assisting immigrants attacked the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, killing 11 worshippers. The assassin has been convicted and sentenced to death. And whereas on June 14th, 2017, U.S. Representative Steve Scalise, Republican from Louisiana, was shot and critically wounded at a baseball field in Alexandria, Virginia, while practicing with other Republican members of Congress for the annual congressional baseball game. Also wounded in the attack were several U.S. Capitol Police officers, a congressional aide, and a lobbyist. The assassin was killed in a shootout with police. And whereas on June 17th, 2015, an assassin targeted the Mother Emanuel AME Baptist Church, a historically African-American congregation in Charleston, South Carolina, murdering nine parishioners during a Bible study session, including Pastor Clementa. nine parishioners during a Bible study session, including Pastor Clementa Pickney. The assassin has been convicted and is awaiting imposition of the death penalty. And whereas on January 8th, 2011, U.S. Representative Gabby Giffords, a Democrat from Arizona, was shot in the head at point-blank range by an assassin outside of a supermarket near Tucson, Arizona, during an event for her constituents. Six people were killed, and 12 others were wounded in the shooting. After an intensive and long rehabilitation process for a severe brain injury, Giffords resigned from Congress in 2012 to focus on her recovery. The shooter was convicted and is serving multiple life sentences in a federal prison. And whereas only days after this resolution was drafted on September 28th, just a couple of weeks ago, September 28th, 2025, a gunman killed four and wounded eight worshippers during church services at the Mormon Church in Grand Blank Township, Michigan, while setting fire to the church building. Although the investigation has not yet been completed, preliminary reports indicate that the gunman supported the current administration and had expressed anti-Mormon feelings. The gunman was killed by the police in a shootout in the church parking lot. And whereas the above referenced bloodshed unfortunately fits into a long history of political violence in this country, including the assassinations of Presidents Abraham Lincoln, James Garfield, William McKinley, and John F. Kennedy, the attempted assassinations of Presidents Theodore Roosevelt, Franklin Roosevelt, Harry Truman, Gerald Ford, Ronald Reagan, George H.W. Bush, and George W. Bush, and the assassination of civil rights leader Martin Luther King Jr. and Senator and presidential candidate Robert F. Kennedy. And whereas the above referenced shootings fail to mention the appalling and numerous incidents of school shootings in this country, including but not limited to the Church of Enunciation School in Minneapolis, Minnesota, just recently again, August 27th, 2025, Oxford High School in Oxford Township, Michigan, November 30th, 2021, just a few miles from here, Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newton, Connecticut, December 14th, 2012, Robb Elementary School in Olveade, Texas, May 24th, 2022, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, February 14th, 2018, Virginia Tech University in Blacksburg, Virginia, April 16th, 2007, Columbine High School in Jefferson County, Colorado, April 20th, 1999, and University of Texas at Austin, August 1st, 1966, among many others. And whereas political violence, as indicated above, is a feature of both the political left and the political right, and the recitation of violent incidents herein was not intended to cover every single incident of political or school violence in this country. Whereas many of the perpetrators often have mental health issues, but their actions seem to be driven or shaped by heightened political polarization, a decline in democratic norms, the normalization of hostile rhetoric, social media spreading anger, distrust, and conspiracy theories, and the easy access to deadly weapons. And now therefore be it resolved that the Madison Heights City Council unequivocally condemns and opposes political violence or violence of any kind against our nation's elected and appointed officials, religious leaders, business managers, students, and their teachers, or those who exercise just and rightful authority. The demonization and dehumanization of political rivals, political leaders who use aggressive, hateful, and extreme language, the weakening of our democratic institutions and norms, social media reports, parts thereof interested in spreading anger, distrust, and conspiracy theories, and/or promoting violent radicalization and mobilization, the lack and availability of mental health facilities for those in need of treatment, and the widespread availability of high-capacity weapons to those who should not have such weapons. Be it further resolved, copies of this resolution shall be forwarded to President Donald J. Trump, U.S. Senator Alyssa Slotkin, U.S. Senator Gary Peters, U.S. Representative Haley Stevens, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Attorney General Dana Nessel, Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, State Senator Stephanie Chang, State Representative Mike McFaul, State Representative Tom Kuhn, Oakland County Chief Executive Dave Coulter, and Oakland County Commissioner Anne Erickson Dalton. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Your Honor, motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, this is a well-written piece and resolution, and I would like to thank the authors. And I would like to thank my fellow council members for supporting, putting this on the agenda. I think that it's something that high time we need to address. And I support this wholeheartedly, but I also want to challenge everyone in this room to live out those values, online, in person, when you see people, when you can't, to live out these values, because there are people's lives who you're impacting that you don't even think about when you're typing, when you're obsessing, or when you're thinking about people. I would caution all of us to be careful with our tongue, because the tongue can be more deadly than the sword, as they say. So as we move this forward, I need you guys to recognize that these people all have family that love them and care about them, and whimsical words can cause a lot of harm, and that's what we just saw a ton of examples of. And we shouldn't wait till it comes to someone that we know before we decide, oh, maybe we should do more than just put it into a resolution. We need to put it into our day-to-day actions. And so I'm speaking to myself and everyone in this room who can hear me or see me, that we need to live out these values, and I wholeheartedly support this resolution and hope we all can do so.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, why did we didn't pick, when the, when the president, you know what, I rescind that, sorry.
Okay, so I think one of the things with this is there are so many that we'd be here for another three years if we were going to list everything, and I think that it was just picking some of the, some of them. Did you have, yeah?
Yeah, I wanted to also concur that this was incredibly well-written. I was a little nervous with the draft coming. You know, you don't want to leave out some of the important events and incidents, and I think this resolution captured that. And I think it also captured the fact that we live in this political climate right now where I think the access to people has kind of eroded respect to public officials. And I've seen that even just, you know, in my, in my 12 years here, the more that people feel like they know those candidates, whether they're, you know, in local city council or all the way up as president, it allows them to really, how do I put this? You're, you're not separating the position from the person anymore. And I feel like resolutions like these are important for us to remind that every public servant is just a person trying to make the world better. And I think we need to start understanding, again, as a nation, that politics are not necessarily our core values. Our core values inspire our political beliefs, but you may actually agree on what the problem is with the person on the other side. You just have different ways of solving that problem. And the divisiveness comes from not showing empathy and understanding that they are coming from a good place, but it's also coming from the fact that we are completely eliminating that just simple respect of the position. I'll never forget, and I won't call out the president, but my, my dad had a particular president he was not very fond of. This president, he would, you know, just rip apart and private. Anyone who knows my dad knows that he was not shy about his political beliefs. But I'll tell you what, that same president came to town, and my dad was trying to get tickets because it was the President of the United States. It doesn't matter what he agreed with, what he didn't agree with, that was his chance to be in a crowd and see the President of the United States. And we need to get back to that type of admiration, the type of time when a Joe Lieberman and a John McCain could work together to put together policy that actually made a difference in our lives. And if you take that political erosion, where all of that respect starts dissipating, and you mix it with easily accessed firearms and very hard-to-access mental health care services, we've created quite the ticking time bomb that will consistently go off unless we all ourselves recognize what we are doing to contribute to that problem. And so I just encourage my peers on council, anybody watching as councilor writes that, make sure that you are showing respect for the office, make sure that you are acknowledging disagreements happen, and it's not that this person is, is evil or wrong, it's that they have a different opinion and a different background and a different set of knowledge and values and skills. They might want the same thing as you. And it's easy to get into this us versus them, because it's so much easier to say they're bad and they're wrong than it is to acknowledge they might have some common ground that you can work together on. So just encourage that type of healthy debate and respectful politics, and I think will come a long way. But I truly appreciate the resolution, and I'm thankful that we had the opportunity to have this conversation. If for nothing else, than the fact that it's on the record that this city council believes wholeheartedly in helping to stem this tide of political violence as overcoming the nation. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Was there anyone else who wanted anything? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. And then we have the bid awards purchases. So first up, we have from the Fire Chief, a scheduled replacement of ambulance number 710.
Consistent with the city's capital improvement plan, Rescue 710 is scheduled for replacement in the adopted fiscal 2026 budget. The new ambulance will replace the 2011 model with 116,000 miles. The city will utilize its inter-local purchasing contract with the Houston-Galveston area council as it's done for the last six fire department vehicle purchases. This is a government-to-government cooperative purchasing program that streamlines the procurement process and provides volume discounts. This purchase is $18,000 below the budgeted amount, and the anticipated delivery is April 2026. And Deputy Fire Chief Ray Gilson is here tonight to answer any of your questions, and staff recommends that city council approve the purchase of the road rescue ambulance from Emergency Vehicle Plus in the amount of $361,681.
Deputy?
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions before we make a motion?
Your Honor, I have a question. What's, what's the anticipated lifecycle on this F-550?
We tend to steer away from time, and we go mileage and condition. And DPW have a better idea of how that looks. They have an algorithm that they use, but the first one that we got similar to this F-550 is a 2019 with almost 100,000 miles on it. We will still retain that particular vehicle, so we're looking at generally between seven and nine years most of the time. This one, we have kept for quite some time just to try to, you know, space out replacement.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I could see the attorney squirming, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the rescue ambulance in the amount of $361,681. And then if there's a second, then I have another question.
All right, can I get support?
Support.
Thank you.
You pick.
All right. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, do you want to say something?
Yes, Your Honor. If, if you could just outline for the, the public what types of runs this vehicle will go on, like what its operational use is.
So we also stock it with fire equipment, and that's a big part of why we are in the F-550 chassis. But is, most of our runs, as you all know, are 80% medical, so most of the time, it's going to be in the capacity of an advanced life support unit. However, when we do need those resources available on a fire scene, we have our fire equipment on that vehicle as well, so it's a dual role purpose vehicle for us.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then we have from Director of Public Services, the Pavilion C Roof Replacement.
The fiscal year 2026 budget includes funding for the replacement of the roof at Pavilion C at Civic Center Park. The RFP was issued on September 10th. Only one bid was received by the deadline. The lowest qualified bidder is Sterling Construction and Roofing. Reference checks were positive, and they have had previous experience with municipal and governmental work. Sterling's Construction also recently completed the replacement of two roofs at the Park Shelter Building in Rosie's and Civic Center Park with satisfactory results. Staff recommends that council award the bid for the Pavilion C Roof Replacement Project to Sterling Construction Roofing of Livonia in a project amount not to exceed the budgeted $35,000.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor. Make a motion that we approve the bid for the Pavilion C Roof Replacement Project with Sterling Construction and Roofing of Livonia in a amount not exceed $35,000.
All right, thank you. Is there support? Keep motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just clarification for the public, which one is Pavilion C?
Oh, good question. I think it's the one behind the fire station.
I think so too, but want to clarify. And that is the newest of the three pavilions, right?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. And then also from Director of Public Services, Rosie's Ball Field Backstop Replacement.
The fiscal year 2026 budget includes funding for the replacement of the backstops at the ballfields located at Rosie's Park. A request for proposals was issued with four contractors attending the mandatory site visit, and three of those submitted bids by the deadline. Staff tabulated the bids and determined that New Edge LLC was the lowest qualified bidder. As this bid exceeds the budgeted amount, staff recommends that council consider two motions, to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $7,884 to account 101-752-987000, and that will require a supermajority of council, and to award the bid for the Ball Field Backstop Replacement Project to New Edge LLC of Brighton in the project amount of $82,884.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for the first to do the budget amendment, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment of $7,884 to account 101-752-987000.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. And then if I can get a motion for the second as well to award the bid to Ball Field Backstop, or for the Ball Field Backstop to New Edge.
Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the Ball Field Backstop Replacement Project to New Edge LLC of Brighton in the amount of $82,884.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, motion carries. And then we have ordinances. The first one is from the City Planner, Ordinance 2206. This is the second reading of zoning ordinance text amendment, ZTA, number 25-01, nonconforming residential driveways.
Section 7.03.10(c) of the new Madison Heights zoning ordinance contains use-specific standards for residential driveways. As a majority of single-family detached homes and their associated driveways in Madison Heights were constructed prior to the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, there are many cases of legally nonconforming driveway conditions throughout the city. Recently, staff have had to deny many applications for the replacement of nonconforming driveways. This is due to Article 13, nonconformities of the zoning ordinance, which requires nonconforming site elements to be brought up to code when replaced. Permit denials have understandably led to frustration for those property owners due to the impracticality of alternate driveway designs or the cost-time factor of going in front of the ZBA for a variance. To avoid an abundance of cases in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, staff recommends several zoning text amendments that would allow certain nonconforming residential driveways to be replaced in kind. Staff proposes text amendments to the following sections of the zoning ordinance. Section 7.03.10, use-specific standards for detached one-family dwellings. Sectional 10.02.1, parking of motor vehicles in residential districts. Section 13.10.6, nonconforming site elements. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 19th, after which they recommended approval of the proposed text amendments as written. Staff recommends that city council approve on the second reading, Ordinance 2206, ZTA 25-01.
All right, thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 2206 on second and final I move that we adopt Ordinance 2206 on second and final reading.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Keep motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank our planner Matt and the staff and our planning commission for a lot of work that went into this. This is one of those rare moments in government where you see the government, meaning us, we made an idealistic change to be able to beautify our neighborhoods, but you realize when you make that decision and you start seeing its effect on people that there is an unintended consequence that is perhaps not helpful to our neighborhoods. And so this revision, I think, is not just necessary, but I think it's an example of good government, seeing that there are problems where people have smaller lot sizes, and the practicality of adopting, you know, where the zoning says the driveway should be to actually having to use your driveway and get things like, you know, trash cans or wheelchairs across. I think there's a level of impracticality there where this can solve those issues, allow them to replace, in most cases in Madison Heights, replace their existing driveway with the same exact layout as it is currently, as they're using it today. And that will hopefully ease some of the pain of some of the folks who've had to come into City Hall. And I hope that, and I know our planner Matt has already probably done this, but I hope that we can reach out to anybody who may have come in with challenges on it. Maybe they haven't completed their project, maybe they waited until next year, and just letting them know now that the, you know, rules have changed and they can now replace like for like. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else, any comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope, motion carries. And then finally, from the DPS director, Ordinance Number 2201, this is also the second reading, the requirement for recycling and trash carts.
To improve efficiency, safety, reduce costs, and ensure compliance with regional recycling standards, the city implemented standardized waste collection practices. As part of this initiative, all residents are required to use uniformed, city-approved carts for trash and recycling. These carts are compatible with automated collection equipment, which helps reduce worker injury risk and enhances service efficiency. The revised ordinance amends Ordinance 517 specifically Chapter 14, Sections 14-10, 11, and 16 to mandate the use of standardized containers for all residential waste and recycling collection. During the first reading on September 29th, city council raised questions about enforcement. Enforcement provisions are already listed in this chapter, Chapter Section 1418, which states, "Any person, corporation, limited liability company, partnership, association, firm, resident, or occupant who violates Sections 1410, 11, and/or 12 shall be responsible for a civil infraction subject to a fine of up to $100. Each day a violation continues to be treated as a separate offense." It is the recommendation that the city council approve this revised Ordinance 2207, requiring the use of city-approved trash and recycling carts on the second and final reading.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that council approves the revised ordinance requiring the use of the city-approved trash and recycling carts as presented on second reading.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Keep motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I was just gonna ask a question of, probably our attorney at this point, but how does that work in practice? You know, it says that each day they're subject to a fine, like, so they put their trash out at the curb, not in the city-given trash can. Every day that it's out there, it's a fine of up to $100, and then all fines are classified as misdemeanors punishable for a fine of up to $500 or imprisonment for up to 90 days or both. So how does that work in practice? I know our code enforcement has a process of issue warning, then it's a fine, and then it's a higher fine if they have to come back out, and a higher, like, we have a scaled. Is that what's going to work here?
What will happen again is, first of all, you know, it's not our intent to be fining people or issuing charges against people, it's intent to get compliance with the law. So we'll start off normally with a verbal warning, then a written warning, and then if it continues to be a problem, then it could issue with a citation, which will normally mean the person have to come into court, have a discussion with me, and see if we can get the situation resolved, which may or may not lead into a fine. And then if that doesn't resolve the situation, then, and that's normally resolved as a civil infraction. And then if that continues to be a problem, which normally it doesn't, but if it does, then it could be issued as a misdemeanor charge where, you know, we could ask for injunction relief from the judge to maybe even intervene and say to the person, you need to get this under control.
And, Your Honor, just a quick follow-up question too. So that resident leaves the trash bag at the street, it will not be picked up because it's not in a cart. What happens to that bag while we're issuing the warnings and, because the truck will have already passed, nobody will pick it up for another week? How, are we handling that like we do lawn issues with code, where we mow the lawn for them and then build them on it? Are we picking up that, that bag, or is that trash bag just gonna sit at the curb for a week?
Your Honor?
We actually had a discussion about this during the ECC meeting the other day. So the attention is for, you know, the first time, you know, as it starts, this is the first
New.
brand-new situation, right? October 1st was when people started being required to use these new bins. The plan is for priority waste will, if they see a non-conforming bin or just a trash bag sitting on the side of the road, they will put a tag on it that says, oops, you forgot to use the bin, right? Reminder, use the bin. And I'm not sure, you know, hopefully the person will take their trash back inside, put it in a bin, and take it back out to the curb for their next, next time around. But it won't get picked up immediately. It will get an oops tag, a reminder to the resident, and then if it continues to not be compliant, then the DPS will be notified or code enforcement will be notified, and it will escalate from there. But, and then those, the code enforcement escalation would happen from there, like the verbal warning from them. But it will start with an oops, you forgot to do this, because we don't, we assume, let's assume best intention, right? Like, maybe somebody just moved in, they don't, they hadn't, they didn't read their packet of information. We just want people to understand what their requirements are and that the bins that come have, have been given to every single house in Madison Heights, those bins belong to that house. When people move out, they leave those bins there, they are RFID tagged, so if they get blown down the street, they can get scanned and taken back to the house that they belong to. Like, they, they can, they belong to that house. Everybody has one, and everybody will continue to have one, and there, and we have the things in place for people to be able to request assistance as needed and so forth, so that compliance shouldn't be a challenge for anybody. It's an easy process to put your bin out to the curb.
But if somebody piles up trash there and they just leave it and leave it and leave it, it will be considered a special pickup by priority waste, and they will be billed accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or?
Your Honor, I was gonna just note the oops tag in my comments before, but, you know, that, I think that what is really important here is that it is really just about making sure that everybody, like, we, it's a learning curve right now. People are gonna learn, and, but if there is zero accountability, then people are just not gonna ever do it, right? So we have to have some sort of process. So I appreciate that we have a process, we've talked about what it is, and we can make sure that, you know, there's not, we're not being punitive here. We're trying to give everybody all of the tools that they need to be successful in throwing out their trash without the, you know, I've, I've already noticed, driving through the neighborhoods on trash days, the marked improvements, you know? I have not seen the trash bags falling in the street ripped open by the raccoons and so forth. It's improved quite a bit. And I just wanna note again, if you have trouble taking your cart out to the, to the curb, we have a process in place for you to get assistance with that. And, you know, those, those folks that, you know, if you don't use a ton of garbage, let's say you are alone in your home, or maybe just one or two of you, I was talking to DPS Director Sean Ballantyne the other day, and he was saying that he and his wife, they recycle a lot, so sometimes they take out two recycling bins and no trash because they only had this much trash over the course of the week, right? So it's, it is a, it's a learning curve, we'll all get there, and we will all be successful in making this a greener and more efficient and less rodent-infested area. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor? Just one more thing from my end. We have a lot of, like, DPS staff and our PD are in our neighborhoods quite a bit. If it's at all possible, if we could have them have some materials on hand, that if they do see somebody with a bag that's out there on trash day, if they could present the materials, because it might be a situation where it's an elderly resident who can't push the bin but doesn't necessarily know about the assistance, or, you know, as Council Rurback noted, it could be somebody who, maybe they didn't get the memo, and they're just, oh, well, I have the new trash can, but I didn't need it because I didn't use that much trash this week, and so they just put one bag out. It could be situations like that. So if, when we have DPS in neighborhoods, or if our PD is patrolling and it's slow enough and safe enough that they could, if we could just have some materials for them on both what these rules and regulations are, but also, and especially so, the program that we have for those who are elderly or disabled, to make sure that that information is available to folks who need it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just point out from my experience that oftentimes, if you see someone new moving in the neighborhood, be a good neighbor and just tell them some of the basic things, and this is one of the things you wanna point out. A lot of times we'll get people coming in on tickets that they're just tenants, and the landlord didn't really bring this up to them, no one neighbor said anything to them, and they're like, I'm sorry, you know, I'm busy with work or with childcare, and just didn't realize it was a problem, and we talk it through and we get the problem settled. But, you know, you see somebody maybe struggling over in the neighborhood, if you just speak up and say, hey, welcome, how you doing? By the way, here's some of the things you might want to just know, it happens, garbage stays on this day, make sure you use your bins, or just different things that might be commonplace in the neighborhood, you know, don't park on the street this day, so on.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would just like to add to the conversation to, also remind our residents to just give priority waste a little bit of time to pick up. A perfect example was when I came home, there was still bulk items not picked up in my neighborhood, and my neighbor saw me and was like, hey, they didn't pick up my bulk item. And I was like, yeah, that's weird, because they had clearly emptied the trash cans. But, and after that, I had called priority to say, hey, you didn't pick up something, what's going on? In between the time that it took me to talk to her and call them, another truck had came through and picked it up. So please be patient. They do have multiple trucks too. If you see a white Premier truck, that is priority's truck, they just haven't got it painted yet. I know we've all seen, like, the red trucks, the green trucks, the yellow trucks, it's like a rainbow color of trucks going through our neighborhoods. They're all a part of priority. I know some of them just haven't had a chance to be painted. I know this because we had the CEO at Revenant Heights, and I asked him, like, what's the deal? And he was like, we just got a lot of trucks and we're short-staffed, just like everybody else. So as we go through this transition, let's continue to be patient with not only our neighbors, but with priorities, they try and figure this out too, because, believe it or not, trash management is not as easy as we think, just like everything in this world. So just give it a little bit of time, and if not, there's a number you can call from priority too, if they don't come a day or two later. And as Council Rurback said, you know, if the trash is sitting out for more than a day or two before the raccoons can get to it, just, you know, say, hey, neighbor, you might wanna pick that up before we all have to.
Is there anyone else, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say nope. All right, and with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Mear.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have quite a few notes that I've written down here. I appreciate all the comments that we heard during the public hearing. I look forward to seeing the traffic study out there because I've spent some time, spent some time over in the neighborhood, and honestly, I have not seen a single car on Dartmouth. I was there during the day, so I'm gonna go back during the evening. I do recall seeing several at the light coming out of the neighborhood, so would do a little more homework on that. And I look forward to that traffic study. That property is pretty dilapidated, looks pretty ugly, the alley looks pretty ugly. So it's, that property's been empty for a long time, so look forward to seeing more information on that. The downtown touchdown and the fall festival these past couple weeks were a huge success. Hats off to all the folks on that. Parks and Rec and DPS, there were tons of people out there. We had to go on a specialist cider and donut run because we quickly ran out of donuts. The arts board quickly ran out of the 200 or so pumpkins that we had purchased for kids to paint, so a lot of fun. The water pretty much cooperated, one weekend was a little too hot, the next week one was, yeah, it was fall, so. Didn't deter people, like I said, a lot of, a lot of good stuff. I was impressed by all the tables of groups that were out there handing out candy to the kids. That was a huge, huge plus, and I shamelessly used my granddaughter to maybe steal a piece of candy or two from some of the tables. But let's cut that from the notes. Lots of fun stuff still going on, please check your brochures. There's Ha 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 Halloween at the library. I'm just gonna thank Officer Tram for the police reserve. Unfortunately, I was gonna plan on attending that, but I'm leaving town on Wednesday, so maybe next year I can sign up for reserves. And again, just lots of fun stuff going on at the library. Parks and Rec has stuff, so check out your brochures. We have copies up here if you didn't get them, like mine, and we've stopped delivering the parks paper to my house, but I'll figure that out. And just closing, I guess, you know, let's, let's all remember that, you know, we had a lot of talk about the trash stuff, and, and, yeah, let's, let's try to be good neighbors, help each other out, and, and be kind, and that's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Profanblis?
Yes, Your Honor, a couple of things. First, our, our meeting started seven minutes ago, or at least it would have in old time. So really thankful, even though it definitely messed with my scheduling today, to, I mean, you know that it's coming, you know that the meeting's gonna move to 6:30, but then in the middle of your day, you just kinda forget it and you go like status quo. So thankful that I was able to, to make it just in time for the meeting to start, but I'm also really thankful that, you know, more residents were able to attend because of the earlier time, and, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that that means it's gonna be more citizen engagement going forward. I actually received an email of somebody watching the meeting live, and it was really, they made a really good suggestion, and I think it's something that our staff could put together pretty quickly, which is just a sign that notates the rules for speaking during open, open comment. I think that that would be very advantageous. In the old council chambers, we had stuff on the wall. We have nothing on these walls. So having, having some sort of a sign or something that people are aware of, and then maybe even like a smaller printout of it at the podium, I think would be very helpful to set some, some clear expectations. So I thank that resident for, for sharing that tip. I also got a message today from a resident who, you know, as we were discussing with the trash, and Council Rurback pointed out, I had a resident, longtime friend of the family, who messaged me about how amazing that service is for her, that it would have been, it would not have been possible for her to take that out, and how great is it- been, it would not have been possible for her to take that out, and how great is it that our city is looking out for, you know, the little old ladies who struggle. And so, I'm really thankful to staff for, you know, incorporating that into the final version. That is ultimately why I voted for it, and I'm so thankful that that's there. Anything that we can do to continue to promote and put that out. I know it seems counterintuitive, because from a finance perspective, you want the least amount of people as possible to participate in the program, because then we'll have more savings. But I think those folks are going to be the ones who will have trash sitting out at the curb. They're the ones most likely to, you know, end up with trash in their backyard and those types of code enforcement issues that make our whole neighborhood worse, just because if you cannot possibly bring it out, the trash has to stay somewhere. And so, anything that we can do to bring more attention, additional social media posts, if we can include that in the next C and G insert, and just reminding people that that's available for them to apply for, I think is critically important. Finally, my last thing. I wasn't able to attend the downtown touchdown. It looked amazing, but I did get sent some of the mayor's comments, and so I wanted to thank Mayor Grafstein for calling attention to the work that was done way, way long ago with, you know, my friend, the late Bob Corbett, and Brian Hartwell, when with myself and the mayor, we made a vote. It was the, I think, the first cannabis vote. And that, as a part of that agreement, has effectively now given us the ownership of that property at 11 and John R., which is a huge opportunity for the city to be able to really, truly create that downtown. And so, I'm sad that I won't be on council at the time when that gets to be built, but I'm so thankful, thankful to the mayor for acknowledging it, and thankful to be sitting here today to be able to say that in those rooms, when we were having those contentious discussions on legal reviews, the fact that, you know, this comes out of it, not just the finances, not just the improved buildings at every location, but the fact that that property, the single most important property in the boundary of our DDA, is now under city ownership and control, is so incredibly huge. And so, you know, I want to say thank you to the mayor, but also thank you to, you know, then-mayor Brian Hartwell and the late and incredibly great council member Bob Corbett for their work on getting that. And so, when you see something built there, I know I will, when the second I see something that gets built there, I'm going to say, I'm going to say thank you to Bob Corbett up in heaven, and shoot a text to Brian and Rosalyn as well, because it takes a long time to get some of these things done. It's about seizing opportunities in the moment when you have them. And sometimes you make, you either make the wrong moves and you fix them, like we did with the driveway ordinance today. But if you keep making decisions that you think will better the city, eventually you're going to hit on a few of them that make it all worthwhile. So, thank you to the mayor, and thank you to Bob in heaven and Brian. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilman Wright?
I don't know how to follow that. Rest in peace, Bob Corbett. I did want to touch base on the trash pickup again. I think, as Councilor Rurback said, it's going to be a transitional period, but I do think that ultimately, we might need to look at other solutions for seniors down the road. So, I'm going to ask staff for strategic planning purposes to look into potential smaller can option exchange programs for our seniors and our folks with slimmer driveways. I have a family of five, so I need the trash cans. They are helpful to me. I know some folks have complained about them, but for my family, it's fantastic, and I don't want to just think about my family. That's why I'm saying, let's look at as potentially smaller options we can give for folks with slimmer driveways in our strategic plan as we look ahead to the next year or so. Speaking along those lines, I want to thank the mom who came out very passionately to speak about her property. She was a first-time person who came here. She didn't come for any type of recognition. She brought her kid because she needed to, and I commend her for doing that and coming to be a part of this. All of us can speak very long and very well. If you can't tell, we can speak for a while, but it's very important, didn't need confirmation on that one, but it's very important that we hear from residents, not from, you know, it's important that you reach out to us directly, but it's important that you come to the meetings, too, so we can understand how you guys feel, what's important to you. So, I want to thank her for coming out. But it also gives us an opportunity to see other opportunities and potential things we can take a look at. So, I also wanted to ask staff to take a look at, what are the possibilities in putting a speed bump on Dartmouth? Because as a father, when she talked about her kid potentially running into the street, every parent at one point has seen your child run, and you feel helpless. So, if we could check into that potentially, particularly if there's so much traffic going down that street that folks are constantly coming and going, let's just see the feasibility of that. I want to reiterate the point also about our reserve program on Wednesday. Please, please come on out, check it out, check out the reserve program, participate in this community. We are what makes it great, is our participation in it altogether. There's another great opportunity there. Thank you again to the folks that put on the downtown touchdown and the Harvest Fest. I enjoyed both, had a ball. The bees were out and having a good time as well, but it was a fantastic, both were fantastic events. And I want to acknowledge that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's a big deal. Cancer is going to touch all of us in one way or another. My father had prostate cancer. My uncle's had it. So, you know, it kind of is what it is for a lot of us. Cancer is going to touch us all, for our women in particular, just, we all need to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month and support our ladies as best we can. It's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month along that line, so we just need to be aware that people are going through things, they don't talk about it, and that's why it's good to have programs like our Co-Responder Program and things of that nature. But it's also important just to check on our friends and see what they're kind of dealing with. It's also National Youth Substance Prevention Month. Again, another reason to check on your friends, because you just don't know what people are dealing with personally. So, let's just be good neighbors, either picking up the trash, to get to know each other, to connect with each other, to just say, "Hey, how you doing, neighbor?" I think it's important that we do that. Finally, I just want to touch base again on that political violence resolution that we passed. We have to live out our values. We can't, you know, one of the things that we had talked about is not just incessantly passing whatever's going on this month, not just passing a Breast Cancer Awareness Resolution, not just passing a Domestic Violence Awareness Resolution, but like, living out these values. So, I'm going to challenge myself and all of my peers to not only, I want to thank them first for passing that resolution, but to live it out online, on the internet, where people can see what we say outside of council, to be polite, to be kind, and remember that everyone here has family, they have loved ones, and we are not out of reach of any of that. So, we have to be mindful and respectful with everything we say of each other. And with that, I'm just going to remind everyone to remember to be kind.
Thank you. Anything from the attorneys this evening?
Just briefly, while I'm not at the City Council meetings as often as you might see the Shermonds, I am at every planning commission, every zoning board of appeals meeting, and we've seen a lot of people coming because of specific issues in their neighborhoods lately. And I'd just like to invite everyone, come out, and we have these master planning sessions, because that's what leads into the planning commission and the zoning laws that we have. And if you give us your input in these types of meetings, hopefully it can help things down the road, so it's not as contentious maybe in the future, and it's your community. Speak out about how you want to see the community being developed, and when these officers are out there to participate in the planning process, jump on in. Help us make the community the best it can be. Additionally, I want to remind everybody that the Fire Department has a new program where you can provide information about your house, so if there's a medical emergency or a fire emergency, they come to your house. They might know special things, like, do you have pets that need to be rescued? Do you have a special medical emergency, like you might not be mobile and need, does someone know that you might be somewhere in the house and need special assistance to get out? We don't want to infringe on people's privacy, but we want to make sure when we are going to a scene, we can be as proactive and helpful as possible. And Fire Department is a really great program, and this is new, using technology to help everybody out. And I encourage you to go to the Fire Department information that they published and find out about that program and share some of that information, so that if, unfortunately, there is a problem, we can do our best to assist you. And then on one final note, I just wanted to note that I heard former Mayor Hartwell brought up, and we had the resolution today about political violence, and there's been some commentary about mental health issues, and that goes all the way up to national tragedies, to issues we have in our local court. And I've had some conversations with now Judge Hartwell about the challenges that we've been having, and he and I have been working together to create what's called a special mental health treatment court that would serve Hazel Park and Mass and Heights. It's in its preliminary stages, but it looks like we're going to get funding to be moving forward with it, and it's an exciting time. And just to let you know, when we're dealing with things, we're not looking to punish people. We're trying to help people, help communities, make sure no one's getting hurt. And sometimes people need a little bit of extra help to get the help they need, and hopefully a program like that will help, because I know mental health can be challenging, and it isn't as easy to get the help as it should be. And hopefully, something like that will help people. And also, that is often sometimes embarrassing or taboo to mention, you're having struggles, and it is a health issue. People have diabetes, people have heart disease, and some people have mental illness, and it's okay to ask for help. So, thank you, everyone, for your assistance on those things.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh, anything from the City Manager?
I don't want to be very repetitive in my comments, but I do want to give a special public thank you to the Community Development Department and the volunteers of the DDA who volunteered their time to put on the downtown touchdown, and then the DPS who really is making a conscious effort to have major events in the different parks throughout our community, because one of the things we heard in a public engagement reach out was that people don't know what parks we have, they don't know what features are in those parks. So, they proposed doing the Harvest Festival, bringing that back. It used to be held at the Nature Center for years and years, and they brought that to Rosie's Park with hayrides and cider donuts and Trick or Treat Trail, and it was a fabulous event. There were people walking from the neighborhood, and they did run out of donuts, they did run out of pumpkins in only about an hour, but that really is just a testament to what a great event it was. So, thank you special to the DPS as well.
Thank you. Anything from the Clerk's office this evening?
Yes, I don't know if anybody knows, but we have an election in a couple of weeks. So, I'm just here to remind you that the election is November 4th, and early voting starts on October 25th at the Royal Oaks Senior Center. That's located at 3500 Marius Avenue. Voting hours are daily from 8:30 to 4:30, except on Thursday, October 30th, when voting hours are from noon to 8 o'clock. Absentee ballots are now available in the Clerk's office, so you can call, fill out an application, come on in, get one, and if you already have your absentee ballot, be sure to turn it in. We have a secure drop box right behind City Hall, or you can come in person and drop it off, or you can put it in the mail. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rurback?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to echo the congratulations to everybody for the downtown touchdown and the Harvest Festival, especially DPS staff. My son called me on Saturday. He was walking down to Rosie's Park, as he normally does, to do his Pokemon Go situation, and he was like, "Mom, there's something really cool here." He was so excited, and he enjoyed it, and then he was like, "Come see me." So, I met up with him, and I was planning to go down there anyway, but it was such a, it was so delightful for me as a parent to have my child, you know, go to his neighborhood park, and there'd be such an exciting, wonderful community event that, you know, he felt welcomed and, you know, really part of. He was really part of his community, and it, I love that, and I hope that we continue doing those things. But I want to say thank you, especially to all the staff that put all the hard work in to bring that there and make it happen. At the October 9th Environmental Citizens Committee meeting, we had some really great conversation, and one of the things that we talked about was the ongoing food compost, food waste situation that's going there. We're excited because we're talking about expanding it, bringing in different groups, doing more to eliminate food waste from the landfill as much as possible. Right now, we've got the bins at the firehouse, we've got the bins at DPS on Ajax Road, and there may be others coming along the way, potentially. Page Middle School is talking about creating a compost, a food compost situation at the middle school for the food waste that comes out of the school. Imagine, I mean, any of you that have kids that know that they don't necessarily eat every food that's on their plate when they are served their meal. So, there's a lot of food waste out of those schools. So, that's just very exciting. I'm excited to see those things come online. Another thing, so, but so far, just from this year, we've got 12,041 pounds of food waste that have been turned into six tons of compost here in Madison Heights. That's remarkable. So, job well done to everybody who is composting their food. And then, speaking of compost, this coming season, there will be a lot of pumpkins to be carved and enjoyed, put on porches, and a lot of people don't realize that when you're done with your pumpkins and you want to get rid of them, you don't have to throw them in the trash. You can actually put them in a yard waste bag, put it out by your curb. It can be composted with your yard waste. So, throw that janky jack-o'-lantern on November 1st into your yard waste bag, and it can be composted with the yard waste. Another thing that the ECC is doing is we're coming together to create the Madison Mix. It's not a DJ set, but it is a native flower seed packet that is coming, that is going to be native flowers, that'll be a mix of those that are specifically designed for various of the types of soil that are here in Madison Heights for most of the city. And those will be coming online in the spring, so they'll be at the Seed Library. We'll have them at events, and people can pick them up for free and enjoy it, so we will be able to expand the seed variety and expand that in Madison Heights for more native pollinators throughout the city. So, it's super exciting. As far as the folks from Dartmouth that were here, I want to thank you guys all for being here and continually advocating for your own neighborhood. I appreciate hearing from you. I have friends that live on Bel Air, so I'm actually on that street, on Dartmouth, a lot, going back and forth to my friend's house. And, you know, anybody who goes to Tim Hortons in the morning also knows that leaving, trying to leave Tim Hortons, do you turn onto Dartmouth because you can't turn left onto 12 Mile? It's kind of a nightmare. That corner is always a nightmare, and I see it all the time, because I'm on that street on a regular basis. Also, I drink coffee at Tim Hortons, so that happens, too, and I just want to acknowledge that I hear you and I understand. I've seen what's going on there, so I am concerned about that. Also, finally, or two more things. I want to say thank you to everybody who came out to the Friends of the Library sale. I think it was a very successful sale this year, so I appreciate those who came and those who volunteered their time to get those sales together and ready. And finally, today is also, we didn't read the entire resolution, but today is also Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I want to make an acknowledgement of that. You know, this land, this area that we live in is, has been, you know, we are stewards of this land now. The stewards of this land that have been here for thousands of years are the Anishinaabe, indigenous people of this area. There's, I think, 12 recognized tribes in Michigan, but, you know, it is important to recognize that we haven't always been here. Even those of us that have been here for 50 years, we are, you know, we are new to this land in so many ways. We are, we are the immigrants. I am Native American. I am Ojibwe. I am Anishinaabe, but not 100%, and all of us have come here at some point. This is not our land, and we are duty-bound to be stewards and good stewards of this land and this community, and I implore all of us to take that to heart and to acknowledge the indigenous peoples that have been on this land and continue to live here, and, you know, make a concerted effort to honor the people, honor the land, and honor our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
No comments.
Councilman's office?
No.
No.
All right. So I've got just a couple of things that I want to address. Number one actually is for, right now, we're going through the shutdown. And so if there's any federal employees who don't have a paycheck, who need food, Cass Community Social Services is, is open to help. So I just want to throw that out there. If there's anyone who needs help because of the shutdown right now, please feel free to reach out to Cass Community Social Services. With respect to the trash carts, yeah, I mean, we don't have fines because they're some kind of a money grab. We have them because we want compliance and, and that's really what the end goal is, is to have everybody using these carts because we want to not have all the trash strewn on the street. You know, that, that's really what a lot of this is. And a lot of this is also just being a good neighbor. When our carts came, a couple of my neighbors were away and so, you know, they dropped off all these carts and one of my neighbors just went and put, you know, put the carts in the back because they knew people were gone. You know, and, and this happens, you know, if we're going to be away over garbage day or other neighbors are gone over garbage day, it's like, hey, can you grab my mail and my garbage for me? So a lot of these things can be taken care of just by talking to your neighbors if you see something. But definitely if you need help, please make sure that you do reach out to the city and we'll see what we can do. With respect to Dartmouth, I mean, that alley has been there, you know, since the 70s. You know, it used to go straight to Marinelli's. Marinelli's has been gone. The alley's just sitting there. That property is a huge property. I was, I went to it and it's just, it's, it's massive and at some point it is going to get developed into something, whether it's this restaurant that is being suggested right now, or it's going to be something else, you know. I, I mean, I was looking and I think there's space there to put in some kind of housing. Like there's just so many different things that can be done there, but there needs to be a way to get into there that isn't just off of 12 Mile, but that is also not bringing a ton of traffic on to Dartmouth and, which, you know, has already been talked about, that it's already a very crowded street. And so I think that there needs to be a conversation about, well, what else can go there that isn't going to have this kind of traffic? I'm glad that they're doing the traffic study. I'm interested to see what's going to come about with that. You know, I mean, one of the wrenches that got thrown into this was that when, when 75 got changed and the Diverging Diamond came on, it really made changes to going into and out of the 12 Mile side of it. So that is a discussion that, you know, we'll see in two weeks. Hopefully this will be figured out in two weeks, but who knows? I mean, this is just, this is going to be, this is a long-term thing. I think the comment was made, this has been going on for two years. And, and that's been empty for 10 years or so. I mean, it's been empty for quite a while. So I think we all want to put something in there and I like to think that we all want to be a good neighbor. So, you know, just stay tuned. We'll see what we can figure out there. There are certain things that we don't have control over. There are certain things that the property owner can do that it's, it's by right and the city has no say on it. So, you know, we do want to be cognizant of that and we want to work with them and we want to work with the neighbors or I think we all want to work with the neighbors as well. Want to thank Hiller. Last week, they invited me to walk to school with them. It was great. It was a beautiful day, so yay, thank you for not raining. That was fun. I really enjoy doing that when I can get out to the schools to do that. Want to thank everybody who helped with the DDA touchdown event, the streetscape grand opening. I'm not going to do my entire speech here because nobody wants to hear that, but as ProTemblis alluded to, I did mention the 11 Mile and John R. corner. I also mentioned that the DDA's been around since 1997. People keep saying to me, why do we have a D, we don't have a downtown, there is no downtown, the DDA doesn't exist. Well, it has actually legally existed since 1997 and in 1998, a suggestion was made that we put in a streetscape. So I want to give a shout out to George Suarez, who was the mayor when the DDA was actually created in 1997. And, you know, these things take time. You know, that was done in 1997. 2018, we had a vote that has now led to us finally, seven years later, owning the 11 Mile and John R. property. And I can't tell you how many DDA meetings I've been to where someone says, "What's happening at 11 Mile and John R.?" And the response is, "I don't know, we don't own it." So now we finally own it, we're going to get something done there. And I expect that the new mayor and council will recognize, you know, now Judge Hartwell, ProTemblis and I, just as when we did the grand opening of our Active Adult Center in 2023, we invited Margie Scott and Brian Hartwell because they were part of the original decisions, even though it took five years. You know, all these things take years to do. So, you know, that was really, that was good and it's an important part of our history. Want to thank everyone who had a part with the Harvest Fest week, this weekend. That was a lot of fun. I biked over, but I saw a lot of people coming in from the neighborhood who didn't even know it was happening and they were just going to the park and they're like, "Oh, what's going on here?" And, you know, so they had fun with that. I took a hayride and so I got there in time for a hayride. I had got some cider, but I did miss the donuts and pumpkins because poof, they were gone because there were that many people. And I think the only negative thing I heard was that they ran out because we didn't know how many people were going to come to this. So I think it's great that, that that's back and then it's at Rosie's because that was another comment that was made to me was it's really nice that not everything is at Civic Park. And I, you know, want to thank staff for really being mindful of having things in the different parks in, in the city. With respect to domestic violence awareness, just a reminder that you can't just look at somebody and know what's going on and you can meet someone and you can say, "Oh, they seem really kind, they seem really charming when they're in public," but that might not be how they are in private and you just don't know. And if you are interested in reading a novel, which is a little bit lighthearted, but it is the topic, I'm going to suggest a novel. It's by Marion Keyes, it's called This Charming Man. And I didn't know when I started reading it what it was and as I was reading it, I realized what it was. So if you're interested, there's that. I want to thank Councilman Fleming and Mayor ProTemblis for initiating the political violence resolution. I grew up in Canada, politics are a bit different there, but I was in a political family there. I had a cousin who's a senator, another was a solicitor general, and there was always respect for the other, the other candidates, the other politicians, people who didn't necessarily agree with you. Even with the differences, they were respectful and that's how we were taught, it was that it wasn't personal, it was, I don't agree with so-and-so's standpoint on such and such. And right now, you know, we almost had a shutdown in Michigan, we're going through one federally and a lot of that is because the two sides are digging in. And we have to remember, especially here in Madison Heights, we have representatives here on both sides of the aisle. And so it's really important that we, as a council, can work with both sides and not just the one that we may personally agree with a little bit more. You know, and this is something that I've always been thankful for, that I've always had a good working relationship with our representatives on both sides of the aisle. And just a reminder as well that our meetings are at 6:30 now, so thank you, council, for showing up for 6:30. Everybody made it. We are having our tree lighting on November 24th and that meeting is going to be at 7:30, but other than that, the meetings are now at 6:30. Our next meeting is going to be on October 27th. The time is 8:07 and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.